And I call it, "Did You Know?" Did you know that the state of Texas requires that for education, for kindergarten through fourth grade, you can have no more than 22 children per classroom? However, the state of Texas allows a waiver to that rule. Many, many districts throughout the state have requested that waiver. Two years ago, over 300 districts requested that waiver and over 7,000 classrooms exceeded 22 students per class. I am very proud to say that this district has never requested a waiver, and I believe, based on the comments from this board and the superintendent, we do not intend to ever ask for a waiver of that rule. Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in the Texas life, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have some special guests here this evening, and I'd like to ask Mr. David Watlington to come forward and introduce Leadership Rowlett, who's been touring the district today, and we just shared a very wonderful dinner with them. Mr. Watlington.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Glick, and I want to tell the board thank you for the wonderful job you do. It's been great for our class to see how well this district functions, and we appreciate the good relationship that we have with Garland ISD. We have 15 members of Leadership Rowlett this year, and if I could, let me call their name and ask you to stand when I call your name, and let everyone stand, then we'll recognize you at the end. First, we have Laura Keesling from the Rowlett Chamber, Will Schell from Crescent Gage, Jamie Bryant from Fit and Prosperous, Chad Caldwell from the Rowlett Police Department, Paul Sandman from the Rowlett Police Department, Ross Freyoff from Crescent Gage, Michelle Bounds from Rowlett High School, Jason Orr from Lake Point Health Network, Dwight Davis from Lighthouse Performance Consulting, Robin Weber from the City of Rowlett, Roy Moss from Atmos Energy, Melvin Mosley from Melvin Mosley Consulting, Carolina Brambilla from Chick-fil-A, Jason Michaels from Massage Envy Spa in Rowlett, and my associate Kenny McElroy, who's my assistant in this class. Leadership Class, Rowlett Class 23.
Thank you, David. Okay, we'll go to item three, which is our public hearings. The first one is conduct a public hearing on School First, which is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. All right, I'm pleased to present the results of the district's 2011-2012 School First ratings. First was originated by Senate Bill 875 of the '76 Texas Legislature in 1999, and its primary goal is to improve management of school districts' financial resources. Some of the objectives are to fairly evaluate the quality of financial management decisions and openly report the results to the general public. And the first rating is based on responses to 20 indicators. The questions are written so that yes answers are good and no answers are bad. This makes some of the questions a little difficult to follow, and I'll restate each of the indicators and results as clearly as possible. Yes, unassigned fund balance in the general fund was greater than zero. And this graph shows the district's fund balance since 2006, and of course, you can see it's been greater than zero all that time. Yes, the district has positive unrestricted net assets on the full accrual financial statements, and yes, the district has not defaulted on any of its debt. Yes, the annual financial report was filed on time, and yes, the district received an unqualified opinion from the external auditors on the district's financial statements. Yes, the district did not have any material weaknesses in internal controls, and the district's three-year average of total property tax collections exceeded 98 percent. Therefore, the district gets the maximum of five points. And you can see our tax collections since 2006 have clearly exceeded 98 percent. Yes, the information submitted in PMS matches the district's annual financial report, and again, we get the maximum of five points. And then question nine, the district's debt payments were less than $350 per student, or the tax revenue per penny was more than $200,000, and in our case, one penny of tax effort generates $1.3 million, and we receive five points. There were no instances of material noncompliance noted in the annual financial report, and no conservator or monitor has been assigned to the district by TEA. The district did not adopt a budget that used all of the revenue and the entire fund balance of the general fund. And yes, the district has enough money to pay for construction projects without causing a deficit, and yes, cash exceeds deferred revenue. The district's administrative cost ratio is less than the threshold. The threshold is 11.05 percent, and the district has been below 7 percent since at least 2006. The district's ratio of students to teachers is within the range specified, and the following graph shows that range, which is between 13.5 to 1 and 21.5 to 1, and we've been below 16.5 to 1 since 2006. And the district's ratio of students to total staff is within the range specified, and again, we have a graph for that, and that range is between 6.6 to 1 and 13.6 to 1, and we've run below 8.6 to 1 since 2006. Question 18, the district's fund balance has increased. 19, yes, cash and investments were more than zero, and yes, investment earnings were more than or equal to the three-month treasury bill rate. So the district earned superior achievement. We received the maximum points on all indicators, and this is the highest rating possible under the guidelines established by TEA. Few other required disclosure items here. And did we have to draw funds between September and December on a short-term note to make payroll or to meet any other operating expenses? No. And, of course, have we declared financial exigency in the last two years? No. And this report is posted on the district's website, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Anybody have any questions? Dr. Castaneda.
I just have a quick one. For the slide that had the ratio of teachers, can you go back to that just briefly?
Yes.
I was just wondering, does that include people with the title of teachers, or does that include teachers in the classrooms only? Or allied? Who does that include?
That includes everyone that the district has coded as a teacher and reported in PMS, and I believe that is primarily teachers in the classroom.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Payne. Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify in favor? Anybody wishing to testify against? Chair recognizes no further witnesses. The chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Please show your affirmation, raising your hand. Motion to close public hearing passes 7-0. Good item 3B, conduct a public hearing on Texas Accountability and Intervention Systems. Dr. Claycamp.
Mr. Glick, trustees, Dr. Morrison, move the mic and make sure it was all good. Thank you for this opportunity to present. Before I get started with the presentation, I'd like to introduce a few people who are here with me, and they'll help answer any questions that you might have. First, I have Mr. Lloyd Jones, Principal at Handley Elementary. Ms. Sherry Flynn, if you're all awake, there we go. Ms. Sherry Flynn, the Assistant Principal at Handley Elementary. Dr. Maida Milligan, the Area Director. Dr. Leslie Coburn, Principal at CBC. And Linda Sires, Area Director. They're about my backup, should you have any questions. All right. We are here to talk about the Texas Accountability Intervention System. What is, as we're calling it in our circles, TAEZ? It is not something that you use to make people surrender in some sort of police environment, I promise. These are activities that are required for any campus that got a rating of improvement required, or for any campus that missed one or more of the system safeguards in the new accountability system. You may recall that I brought to you the accountability presentation about a month ago. It is a continuous improvement process that is driven by the ongoing collection of data and analysis of data and monitoring of improvement plans. It is part of the requirement of state and federal law. We were a little bit delayed in getting some of this information because it was all still kind of pending that AYP waiver, which I am excited to say we did conditionally get. There are campus and district-level interventions, and what we're going to speak about today are the campus-level interventions. You'll notice on this chart, there are two different types of campuses. A campus that is rated improvement required and a campus that has earned a rating of met standard or met alternative standard. We're going to be focusing on our two improvement-required campuses. Happy to say that both of these campuses are in their first year of improvement required, so we're going to stay at the top of this flow chart. As part of the requirements of being improvement required, they have to have a campus intervention team that includes a professional service provider, as well as the district coordinator of school improvement, and they have to engage in these TAEZ activities. And so tonight, we're going to be reviewing the TAEZ activities. As I mentioned, TAEZ is a continuous improvement process and planning. It begins with data analysis. You review your data for the last three to five years, and you're looking for findings based on trends in the data. It's not just our accountability this past school year. We want to look at what trends are there even before we got this rating. Then we conduct a needs analysis. Both of these campuses independently conducted the needs assessment, where they looked at the root causes of student achievement, groups that were not performing where we wanted them to at those standards, what is causing that performance level, and we identify the needs and then prioritize those needs. Next, the campus engages in improvement planning. This is where they're going to set annual goals, determine quarterly goals, and determine interventions or activities that they're going to do in order to meet the goals. And finally, the implementation and monitoring of these plans. We're required to submit the initial plans to TEA by the end of this month, and then there'll be quarterly updates that we'll provide to TEA so that they can continue to monitor our progress in implementing these plans. As I mentioned, the targeted improvement plans are developed by a team. It's not the principal sitting over in their office saying, "This is what I'm going to do." It's not Kim Claycamp sitting in her office saying, "This is what you needed to do." The team is composed of the district coordinator of school improvement, which is Dr. Wells. It's also the district leadership team. District leadership team includes myself, Dr. Wells, the area directors for the respective schools, and Dr. Williams. In addition, we can pull other people in other departments and leverage resources that the campus may need in order to implement their improvement plan. We also have a professional service provider for these two campuses. This is someone that's external to the district. His name is Mr. Leslie Williams, and he has spent numerous hours over the last few weeks working with the campus on their improvement plan. He's just an external set of eyes that says, "Have you considered this? This is what I'm seeing in your data. Can we talk about this?" And finally, there is a campus leadership team that's made up of people on the campus that really understand the needs of the campus and can help analyze the data and have a vested interest. All of these groups are going to work together to get a gold star so that next year, if I have to do this presentation, and hopefully I won't, it will not include Handley and CBC. Let's talk about Handley Elementary. As you're aware, they do have a rating in 2013 of improvement required. And you may remember seeing this index report graph from the last presentation I did. Notice that they met index one, they met index two, they were not evaluated on index four, but they missed index three, closing the performance gaps by one point. Okay? Remember that index three is the one that looks at the three accountability subgroups, economically disadvantaged, and then your two lowest-performing race and ethnicity groups. In the case of Handley, their two lowest-performing groups were their African-American students and their white students. However, in their data analysis, they did not have sufficient numbers of white students to contribute points, so their index three is based entirely on just the economically disadvantaged and the African-American student performance. In your folders that I left, the kind of green folders that I left at your placemat, you have a complete printed copy of the improvement plan that Handley's presented. You received a draft copy of this last week, and there's been a few updates, particularly in the areas of needs. In addition, I've included for you a summary from the system safeguards, and I've highlighted in each of the areas where you're going to notice that this campus is really focusing Based on the needs assessment, Handley's determined that they have four goals that they want to pay particular attention to. You'll notice if you look at that system safeguards report, that one pager that's front and back that I highlighted, that these needs assessments really are focused on the areas that are highlighted here, writing and math. So they have a need for teacher professional development on the use and the implementation of the writing process, as well as scoring rubrics, understanding how all of those work. They're going to increase the student writing products based on authentic personal experiences. The third need really focuses on the math area, increasing student individual skill proficiency in math and content vocabulary. And then additional teacher professional development in designing instruction and math problem-solving strategies. Next, we're going to take a look at the Cooperative Behavioral Center, or CBC. Again, they earned a rating of improvement required, and you may remember this graphic from their report. They were not evaluated in index two because they did not have sufficient numbers of students. However, they were evaluated in the other three indices. One of the interesting things about CBC is I went back all the way to 1994, and since 1994, CBC has not been included in the accountability rating system. There were two years that they came out with a rating, and both of those years, they were successfully appealed. So this year, when they came out with a rating, we have again appealed. The last two appeals that we filed with TEA for the CBC rating were to exclude CBC from the accountability system. This year, we did not ask for an exclusion, rather, we asked for them to be evaluated under the Alternative Education Accountability System. Now, if we were to impose those AEA standards on CBC's performance for last year, you can see by this graphic that they have met all the Alternative Education Accountability standards. The good news is, as I've been telling Dr. Coburn, all of their efforts on this targeted improvement plan are not in vain, because they will have missed some of the system safeguards, and they'll still be required to do the plan, they just won't have that reporting requirement. CBC has identified five needs where they want to focus their efforts, and you can see a lot of this has to do with curriculum alignment, pedagogy, and data analysis in the core content areas, as well as increasing participation. One of the things about CBC is when I started looking at their data with them, we're really talking about 14 unique students that tested in reading last year, and 14 unique students that tested in math. And so if one of those students is absent because they have a flu, then that kills their participation rate, and the standard is 95. So they pretty much need to make sure that everybody's there all of the time in order to meet that system safeguard. And finally, same thing related to the graduation rate. When you're looking at, you know, a class size of 18, 19, one student makes a significant impact. And with that...
Are there any questions for Dr. Claycamp? Dr. Castaneda?
Nicely done, Dr. Claycamp. This may be just a question about TEA practice and may not be resolvable, but when looking at the data for Handley, it's a very small number of white students, which is why they were not used as the second category, correct?
Yes.
So that was 19 students, but under the same criteria, it's an even lower number at CBC, correct?
Yes, it is a lower number, and what they said is they will use small group analysis for those very, very small numbers. Now, small group analysis is the three-year averaging. We've only had STAR for two years, so they were only able to average two years of data for CBC.
Okay. So already, the indicators are that the alternative criteria are the better criteria to use when considering the performance of the CBC.
Yes, due to the specialized nature of the campus and their goals, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Claycamp? Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify in favor? Anybody wishing to testify against? Chair recognizes no additional witnesses. Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
A motion and a second. Please show your affirmation, raising your hand. Motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. We'll go to item number four, present the Evidence of Excellence Awards. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. Reading, writing, and arithmetic are the basics of education, but Garland ISD also teaches skills needed to begin careers. Partnering with Atlas Copco Drilling Solutions, the district's helping students find their place in the workforce before leaving Garland ISD. The two have teamed up to launch Project Search, a national program for special education students in a partnership that focuses on the abilities of young adults by providing hands-on work experiences. Project Search began in 1996 as a partnership between Cincinnati Children's Hospital and local disability service organizations to fill entry-level positions. The program has now grown to include more than 200 businesses across 40 states and four countries, just broke into Texas this year, and this is either the second or third, only the second or third Project Search partnership in the state that Garland ISD is part of. GIST will partner with Atlas Copco to offer a one-year internship program for students aged 18 to 21. The inaugural 2013-14 year will accommodate eight special education students who will complete three 10-week internship rotations. To be accepted, students had to apply and interview, had to have met high school graduation requirements, but also remained in the district for additional training and support. Internships include engineering, construction, inventory, and administrative responsibilities. Since the first day of school this year, students have worked five days a week from 6:45 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., mirroring the first shift at Atlas Copco. They participate in morning calisthenics with employees. Other staff members report to company managers and eat lunch with fellow coworkers. They also complete entrance and exit interviews. Other partners beyond Atlas Copco through Project Search include the Texas Department of Assistive and Rehabilitative Services that's administered through Texas Tech University, and also Dallas Metro Care Organization, a group that provides job placement once these students leave the organization. At this time, I would like to ask Nidia Parra, Director of our Special Education Program, and Sandy Brown to come to the lectern to tell you a little bit more about the actual program and its partnership.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, trustees. Seated behind me are the eight students from our different high schools that have started this year in a very different way, in an internship at Atlas Copco Drilling Solutions here in Garland, in a complete job immersion worksite. The training they receive through this project in partnership with Atlas Copco will help them make a successful transition from high school to life after high school, post-secondary activities. We're very proud of our students, and we're also deeply indebted to Atlas Copco for embracing our students, they have just been wonderful, and providing them with a real work environment. Our students have already made gains in their social skills and communication skills and essential job skills in just the short time they've been there. After spending just a little time with them this afternoon while they were eating their pizza dinner, it's obvious that they're extremely proud of what they've already learned. And I'd like for Ms. Sandy Brown, our transition specialist for Garland ISD, to come up and give you just a brief overview of what the students have already done at the worksite.
Thank you very much for having us and giving us the opportunity to acknowledge this fabulous program that we have been able to acquire from Texas Tech from a grant. We are one of three districts in the Region 10 area that was able to get this grant this year. We started off in April. It was pretty fast-moving, but we were able to get it started with the cooperation of Atlas Copco. Each of the eight interns participate in the eight different internships. They're all at different sites within the business, working side by side with their managers and their coworkers, with the same expectations of the people that work at Atlas Copco in all different areas. They will, as Nidia had mentioned, they will have three 10-week internships where they'll be able to rotate and try different types of skill learning and skill sets, that we look at their interests and their skills and where we can best fit them. We do partner, this is very important, with Atlas Copco, as well as the Department of Rehab Services and Dallas Metro Care Services. Our adult agency will support us beyond high school in helping place these students. The ultimate goal is, at the conclusion of this year-long program, these students, each of them, will be placed in a business where they have interest, and Atlas Copco has really spurred the interest in the manufacturing field. And we are one of very, very few out of those 250 Project Search programs in the United States and overseas that have a manufacturing job site. So we are truly blessed to be partnering with Atlas Copco. And I would like to introduce our partners, if I could. Jessica Byrd, who is our HR representative, director at Atlas Copco, who has supported this program from its inception. We also have Tina Schaefer, our DARs counselor, who works with us, and we have Dallas Metro Care, who is not able to come tonight, but we do have one of the job coaches that is working with us. Dallas Metro Care and DARs has provided a job coach with us full-time, as well as the district has provided a vocational adjustment coordinator and a job coach. And with this is Tina Schaefer from the Dallas Department of Rehab Services, and then with Jessica Byrd. Jessica, you want to say a few words?
I'll be really fast, but I just want to say Atlas Copco are extremely grateful for this partnership. These students are interns. I keep calling them students, these are students to me. These interns have been remarkable. I mean, nine weeks into this, and they have completely exceeded any expectation that we could have had. We're very excited to see what the next 21 weeks bring and the impact they've had on our employees and how they've been embraced by our employees has just been remarkable. So thank you very much.
I'm with the Department of Rehab Services, and I'm a vocational rehab counselor. And I'm out into the high schools here in Garland ISD. I go to all seven of them, and I was fortunate enough to be introduced to all these young adults that we can help through the business, get them transitioned into the world of work. And that's what DARs is all about, is helping them transition out of school into the real world and let them know that there are rules out there that they have to follow and that it's different from high school. And I think by them being actually in the workforce, the way they are now, totally emerged in, they get a different outlook on what's expected of them when they hit the real world. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce the three staff that we have working with them, and they will introduce or bring the students up as well. We have Luanne Lamont, who is our vocational adjustment coordinator, Monica Bruna, who is the Garland ISD job coach, and Jessie Quintanilla, who is our Dallas Metro Care director.
I'd like to introduce our students to you, our interns to you. I'll begin with Amber Langhart.
Ashley Colt.
This is a fine, young group of adults. Thank you for that. I couldn't do my job without Monica and Jessie. They're wonderful.
On behalf of the district, I would like to especially thank Atlas Copco. And for those students, I remember when I had my first job, and I came back, it was in high school, early in high school. I got back, I was really exhausted, and my father said, "Now you know why it's called 'work.'" So, welcome to the world of work, but it's also another great step in your lives. Are there any parents here this evening? Would they like to stand, please? We'd like to recognize you. Again, we thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to item 4B, Received 2013-2014 Campus Improvement Plans. Ms. Allen. And Ms. Allen and I had a very interesting conversation this morning about the improvement plans, and I learned an awful lot about what they entail, how they're put together, a lot more about Title I, and we will be inviting you back for a full explanation. One other thing that I've asked for from Ms. Allen, each of the schools has specific dates in which they need to report back their progress on all their benchmarks. In the past, we, as a district, have not received that information, but we have agreed now that we will be seeing that on those benchmarks, how they're doing on that basis. I think the next one, the first one is actually November.
November, correct.
Okay. And so, we will be getting that information in the future, just to see how we are doing on that campus basis. Please proceed, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, Dr. Morrison, and trustees. I've just prepared a few comments to talk to you about our Campus Improvement Plan process and requirements, as well as our timeline, and then I'll entertain any questions that you might have. As you know, there's a legal requirement for us to create a Campus Improvement Plan annually for each campus that's based on the Texas Education Code, as well as NCLB with our Title I requirements. And it is a collaborative effort between district staff, campus staff, parents, and community members in order to improve the achievement of our, of our students by looking at those educational outcomes. The membership required for Campus Improvement Plans, we require two parents, two community members, one business member, and then five professionals with one of those being the principal. And then, at a high school, they would have one high school student. And we are still working on updating some of those plans. Some of the campuses have not updated with their current community or business, business representatives, and we're working with those campuses to update those and the plans that you have, some of those are missing. When you receive those formative reviews in November, those should all be complete. The timeline for our Campus Improvement Plans, in March through May, our campuses conduct a comprehensive needs assessment in which they look at various forms of data in eight different areas to determine what their needs are. In May, they elect a new Campus Improvement Team to begin working on their new plan for the next school year. June is when a draft of their plan is due, along with their Title I budget, because Title I is required to be addressed with that funding amount in their Campus Improvement Plan. In October, we bring the, the plans to you. And then, we have formative reviews four times a year, in November, February, April, and June, and we will be providing you with those on a CD during, after each of those update times. And then, in August, they complete their summative review of the plan based on all of the, the scores and the data that they receive back from, for the end of the school year. The components of the Campus Improvement Plan, first of all, we have the comprehensive needs assessment, and then the campuses determine what their performance objectives are. Those are basically campus goals that are written in a SMART format, and we train the principals on that SMART format. And then, we, they have their strategies or their action steps in order to achieve those performance objectives for the school year. They list the people responsible for monitoring each of those strategies, as well as any budget requirements related to Title I or State Compensatory Ed. Those are both required to be in their plan. And then, those four annual formative reviews, and then the summative review at the very end. We work collaboratively with the area directors to review the Campus Improvement Plans every year, and this is an ongoing process. Our department in special programs provides the training, as well as technology support, because we use an online program. We also review their plans based on Title I and state comp requirements, and then the area director's support with aligning those performance objectives to the campus needs and then the district goals. We do use a program called Plan for Learning, which we've been using for about three years. It helps us with a consistent format, and the campuses are able to have all of the same, the same look to their plan. It's a lot easier for them to access because it is online. They can access it from home, from school, from anywhere they have internet access. And it also helps keep us in, in compliance with legal requirements because it's updated anytime there's a change in the law or something is added. And it is a work in progress. We continue to get better every year, and we've seen a tremendous growth in, in the consistency of our plans from year to year, and we'll continue to work on that. And as you know, Campus Improvement Plans are a living document, so when you get those plans after each formative review, you may see some slight changes in the plans based on the campus needs or how they're doing on the strategies, whether or not they've continued or discontinued to implement some of those strategies based on their data. Questions?
Any questions? Ms. Griffin.
You've answered one of my questions partially, and it was concerning the monitoring and the makeup of the teams.
Yes.
And tell me, what's the general philosophy of how the campuses go out and seek the business owners and the parents? Are parents selected, or do they get an opportunity to volunteer? Help me understand how that process works.
It varies, I think, from campus to campus, and generally, the campuses try to seek volunteers that will come in and serve. I, I think there are some, some cases where parents have asked to be on Campus Improvement Plan, on Campus Improvement Teams, and that happens as well. But generally, it's, it's the campus going out and seeking volunteers to be on that team.
So, never do we have a Campus Improvement Team that does not have a business owner or parents on them? Is that a true statement?
We give the compliance requirements, and we tell the campuses what they're supposed to have. As far as whether or not they always have that member, I can't answer for sure whether or not they do. We have put that requirement out there, and sometimes those people move in and out.
I would be interested to have that update and that
Sure.
... when we receive the timeline of things that are to be reported, that we are in compliance with the business owners and the business professionals in the community and making sure that we have the parents there at all times.
And that is definitely our goal, yes.
Ms. Griffin, on the CD at the back of each one, there is a listing. Some are missing.
Right.
And so, that's, we, we can't tell, but the ones I saw seem to always have at least one or two business people. All, all had parents. I think there was sometime, sometimes a community person missing, but again, there were some that didn't have them, and, and that's what we talked about, and we'll have that out our necks. So, we'll be able to ascertain who's being appointed and whether they're fulfilling that requirement.
Because it's an excellent team
Yes.
... for the community to participate in.
Absolutely.
But we have to make the community aware that there are slots available at various campuses.
Anybody else? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item five, which is our public forum. Dr. Barajas will act as our timekeeper. You will be given three minutes. The clock's starting after you've given us the following information, name, address, and if, and if you have any children in the district. Again, understand that we cannot respond to questions you ask other than factual information because under the open meetings requirements, we can only talk about things that have been noticed for this particular agenda. So, the first speaker will be Ms. Jocelyn Kwan. Again, please give us your name and address for the record, and any children in the district. Thank you very much.
Sure. My name is Jocelyn Kwan. I'm 2781 North Garland, Garland, Texas, 75040, and I have two kids in the district. I'm the parent of two high school students in Garland ISD. Not only have my kids attended Garland schools throughout their nine and 12 years in public school, but I also attended GISD my entire school career. My children have represented GISD through their academics, athletics, band performances, and they have done it with pride, dignity, and honor, as has 95% of the student body. In the recent weeks, I have become increasingly upset at some new policies. My daughter, who is a senior, was approached at the homecoming game and asked to turn her shirt inside out because someone did not like the saying. The saying is kiss my class goodbye. This saying is sassy, witty, and funny. In addition, it does not violate the GISD dress code by advertising or depicting alcohol, drugs, nudity, tobacco products, satanic themes, gang memberships, obscene language, graphics, or phrases. In addition, it was approved by the school administration long before last year even ended. Going forward, this administration will have the same opportunity to approve shirts, but you can't unring a bell. This shirt simply states that these students have worked very hard to get to the top and are extremely proud of it, and they certainly deserve to be sassy. I have been informed that they cannot wear it to school or any function on school property. Any student not currently a member of an organization that performs at a school or any function has the right to wear whatever they want after school hours. If they are members of a school organization and representing them in a UIL event, then they are provided uniforms to wear. If they are member, if, but as a public fan attending a public event, that's the parent's responsibility to ensure they dress appropriately, and I ensure that my children dress appropriately. I came across, this shirt does not display any knowledge of what school or district it represents. I came across a Supreme Court ruling dubbed the Tinker Standard. It states, "As a First Amendment right, the school officials may not silence students' expression just because they dislike it. They must reasonably forecast based on evidence and not on an undifferentiated fear or apprehension of disturbance, that the student expression would lead to either a substantial disruption of the school environment or an invasion of the rights of others." These shirts, along with the body paint frequently seen on Friday night football games, are all forms of expression. These students are expressing pride in their school and their statuses within. I have been to hundreds of school events. As a parent and a student, not once have I seen, seen disruption caused by any shirt or even the body paint. Just last week, I was at a Friday night game, and among my group was students from four Garland School of High Schools. One of them had on this shirt in question, and one of them had their painted, school-colored paint. There was no disruption or fear from this group of fans, and they all had on their respective high school t-shirts. Aside from that, any large gathering of students or even adults could cause a disruption. These students are simply using their freedom of expression. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Robin Scott.
2842 Beltline Drive. I have no kids in the district, but I am a concerned citizen. When I heard about, but I'm speaking about the same thing that Jocelyn was speaking about. The shirt in question is this one right here. The shirt was approved by the school, purchased by the school, distributed by the school, and now, all of a sudden, the kids can't wear them. I'm a little confused about why this is so offensive. It, it doesn't say anything bad. I think it's pretty funny. There's nothing offensive about it. There's nothing, I read the bylines about the, the, the school clothing. This doesn't in any way violate any of those guidelines. I'm not sure why it got banned. I'm not sure why the, the body paint got banned. It's not offensive to anybody. The kids paint their bodies, they put numbers on their bodies. That's it. I don't understand why, at a time in their lives when education is supposed to be the most important thing, we are making a big deal out of something so trivial that we've got everybody upset. We don't need to give teenagers a reason to rebel. They rebel enough already. Taking away their little shirt is a big deal to them. It's not a big deal to us, and I don't know why we're making a big deal about it. And I don't need my whole three minutes. That's all I need to say.
Thank you very much. Lee Perez, Perez, Leah. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
My name is Leah Philzoperez. I reside at 2741 Dukeswood Drive, Garland, 75040. Good evening, Honorable Trustees, Dr. Morrison, welcome, and to our Deputy Superintendents. I am the proud parent of twins who have graduated from this school district very recently. I'm also a part-time teacher, full-time child advocate. It seems full-time volunteer for absolutely everything that this district possibly needs and actually what this state probably needs for our children to promote the welfare of our children. But tonight, I'd like to talk about this district and some issues that do affect our volunteers, in particular, our PTA volunteers and our booster club volunteers. On September 4th of this year, I was made aware that as a result of the recent audits at each of our Garland schools and facilities, that all the PTAs in this district, along with several booster clubs, were in violation of a private contract or lease drawn up approximately two years ago by the school district and Dr. Pepper Snapple Group in exchange for a new billboard in one of GISD's football stadiums. I contacted Dr. Baraja, Barajas, excuse me, and asked him to investigate. The following is his response. "I reviewed the agreement the Garland ISD District has with Dr. Pepper Snapple Group and conclude the following. The district's exclusive license and supplier agreement defines an event as all events and/or meetings associated with or conducted in connection with school, including, without limitation, PTA groups, booster clubs, and any organization sponsored by school. The agreement also defines the Garland ISD District as all school, campuses, facilities, and concessions. Further, and to your inquiry, Dr. Pepper has granted the exclusive right and privilege to sell beverages within the district. Further, the company shall have the exclusive right to supply beverages at all events. I was told that the key is supply, implying that not only a single group, that not a single group can bring into any of our facilities or on any school property to sell or fundraise anything that is not exclusively Dr. Pepper Snapple product. I had asked Dr. Barajas to investigate this contract because it seemed absurd that a private business contract between the local school district and another company could actually extend so far as to dictate what products our community volunteer groups or community businesses were restricted to abide by per this private agreement. It seemed absurd that the school district would dictate to our many community partners what items they could donate, giving the impression that GISD only promotes and boosts the sales of those it has exclusive contracts with at the expense of not only our volunteers, but our stakeholder funds. PTA, along with the many other booster groups and community partners throughout our district, volunteer their time and efforts, donate their products as a good-faith effort to augment the educational experiences of our children to go on field trips, to pay for buses, and take our children on field trips. School Board Members, Dr. Morrison, and Deputy Superintendents, as a volunteer for this district over the past 14 years, I find it very I find it very disturbing that you're approving these contracts. Please reconsider reviewing these contracts and looking at the logic and what it can do to our community partners and to our volunteers who give their time to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Final speaker, Richard Blasko.
My name is Richard Blasko. I live at 1573 Glenmore Drive, Lewisville, Texas, 75077. I do not have any kids that go to school in Garland ISD. Mr. Gluck, Dr. Morrison, Board of Trustees, I am just coming today because of a new bid, air conditioning filters. I put a proposal together and submitted it with our company called Filter Systems, and the recommendation you have is for a company called Tex Air Filters or Air Relief Technologies out of Fort Worth, Texas. One of the specifications in the bid was that it had a UL approval or code in our industry for that particular filter. It's a UL 900. I request that before you decide to approve it, that you check if that's important to you, if the safety testing is important to you, that you check to see if this particular company has it. I am confident that they do not. I've checked on that, and that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public forum. We'll go to Item 6, Discussion Items. A, Trustees' Exchange of Information. Anybody want to have some comments about what's been going on? Axe, you want to start?
Anytime, we start at the other end. I would like to point out that I attended the district's Magnet Fair about a week ago, and it was a very good event. I was very impressed with the presentations that were made by all of the folks that were there. I think it... As a former IB teacher and IB parent, I was able to discuss a few items with the parents of prospective IB students over at the Garland High Table. I also went to the International Art Exposition and was blown away by the talent of our kids in every possible area, particularly the performing groups that were there. They were good enough for the professional stage easily, and that's all I had to comment on.
Ms. Griffin?
Mr. Gluck, Trustees, I had the privilege to sit on a panel on yesterday of the Dallas Bar Association of the Metroplex to discuss best practices within our district. And at this time, I would like to thank the staff members that made my presentation so easy, and that is Cheryl Beard, Dr. Kim Lazos... Okay. Ms. Carol Evans, Ms. Carol King, Courtney Clearfield, Ebony Forte, Dr. Clay Camp, and Ms. Janice Howard. Thank you so much for providing the information. And I was questioned after the panel. We didn't know all of that happens in public education. I said, "That's because you have not been to Garland ISD."
Ms. Luna? Mr. Lambert?
Well, since we're talking about speaking, the Region 10 is having their Tier 3 Board Training on December the 7th. So for those of you that still need board training, you can attend on December the 7th on a Saturday afternoon, and as an added treat, you'll get to hear yours truly speak on a legal topic to be determined, so...
Mr. Nag?
I believe last year was the first year that Trustee Griffin started inviting the members of the city councils of the tri-cities to come to football games, and this year, Mr. Gluck continued that. And just last Friday night, we had the folks from Saksy there, and it was standing room only up in the press box. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to meet with other folks who are elected officials from our neighboring cities and to work together and to have some good Texas football and some good barbecue to eat and maybe to build some relationships. And so I just think, thank you, too. That's a wonderful public relations effort, and I hope we continue that in the future.
Dr. Castaneda?
Thank you. Well, like quite a few of my trustees, we've spent a lot of time together in the last couple of weekends with the football game, the Fine Arts Festival, as well as the Magnet Program. And I also want to thank Trustee Axe because my son was interested in the IB program, and he helped him answer some questions about that. So it was great to have you as a colleague and as an educator.
And I would also like to comment on the international fine arts. Between the actual artwork and the music groups, it was really amazing. And the diversity of the instruments played and the music played was just incredible. Now, the best thing for me about the football game on Friday is they usually bring pizza, and because we had so many kids there, they ate most of the pizza, so I didn't get a chance to eat it, which is a very good thing. Okay, let's go. Any other information? We'll go to Item 6B, Review of Our Calendar. A couple of things to be aware. A couple of trustees have asked about whether we can go visit the new construction that's been finally completed at Dougherty and the four high schools where we did additions. And Mr. Hudson is ready, willing, and able to set those visits, so we just have to communicate that with Ms. Minks. He's available either mornings or afternoon. We'd like to have most three trustees go again with the Open Meetings Act. So please be in touch with Jan, and then we'll start to schedule those trips. Coming up tomorrow is the Public Forum Bond Assessment. This is the work being... Has been done by Huckabee and Associates. This is the first meeting where the public will see. If you're in the audience this evening here, you're certainly invited. 6:30 at the Colwell Center. If you're watching on our website, you're certainly invited again tomorrow. It'll be a very interesting presentation as we move forward with the work that has to be done on our buildings and potentially going for a bond issue that could either be in May or in November. So that's coming up tomorrow, 6:30. In the month of November, on November 4th, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Axe, and myself will be having dinner with the Garland Masons. On November 13th, the North Texas Area Association of School Boards is having their meeting in Irving, and everybody's certainly invited. It's an interesting topic. On November 21 and 22, the Large District Leadership Forum in Austin. We still haven't gotten the official brochures yet. At least, I don't think we've received them. We have the unofficial ones. You can get with Ms. Minks, and she will register you in Austin. Starting tomorrow is the opening for registration for the National School Board Association Convention in New Orleans. That'll take place April 5th through 7th. We make sure on your calendar you show that we have scheduled an extra meeting on December 17th. That's Tuesday, and that'll be our workshop. They'll receive the final product from Huckabee and Associates. Also coming up is the Avid Conference. That's December 12th, 13th, and 14th, and you have that information. In... Also, in December, we need to look about eventually canceling our second meeting, but I think we'll do that in subsequent conferences. Anything else on the calendar?
Did you receive the updates on the strategic plan dates from Jan or Chris?
No.
Mr. Moore, do you have those?
Strategic Plan, the Educational Summits, we've scheduled three dates. November 14th at the Curtis Colwell Center. That's, I believe, a Wednesday, or a Thursday, rather. November 18th at Lakeview Centennial High School, and December 3rd at Rowlett High School. Both high school events are going to be in the auditorium. All of the events are scheduled to take place from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Just to let the board know, we finalized those dates today. As a reason, we're giving them to you. They'll go out on the website as early as tomorrow. We picked a Monday, a Tuesday, and a Thursday in case people have conflicts on certain days with their children and events. The forums are basically the same thing every night. It's an open, public forum that will be led by the Strategic Plan Company that we've hired, and there's a format, too, that will get that format to you. And this is just the first step, and then we have a lot of breakout meetings over the next two to three months after that. But this is just for the general public to come and give us feedback on the school district and the things that they are seeing and the things they wish they would be seeing.
Thank you. Anything else on the calendar? Okay, we'll go to Item 6C, Future Agenda Items. Anybody have any? No? Okay. We'll go to Item 7, which is our Consent Agenda. These are items that we talked about at our work session two weeks ago. We discussed all these. I guess the question, Dr. Morrison, is we did have some comments about one of the items coming up, and I believe we need to pull that item.
Yes.
And that is Item 7C3. Everybody? Okay? Okay. So if there's no discussion on that, we'll pull that. So then, we'll be talking about our Consent Agenda. One motion, A, B, C, C, 1, 2, and 4. Renewal bids, D, 1 through 6, and E. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda items with the exception of C3.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Okay, we'll go to our action items. This is Item 8, Consider Approval of Texas Accountability and Intervention System, TAIS, Targeted Intervention Plans. Dr. Clay Camp?
Thank you again for this opportunity. This is the follow-up to the public hearing that we held earlier this evening. This is just to seek your approval of the targeted improvement plans that have been developed for Handley and CBC.
Any questions?
Y'all are stunned that I have no more to say.
Dr. Castaneda?
Thank you. Do the interventions that are being recommended, are they a reallocation of current funds? Are they supplementation of current campus funds to effectuate the recommendations?
I'm going to ask Lloyd Jones, Principal at Handley, to come and speak.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening to Mr. Gluck, the trustees, and Dr. Morrison. Yes, they are a combination of both. We have some with campus funds and some with Title I funds.
Any other questions? Being done, the Chair will entertain a motion on approval of the TAIS.
Move to approve the TAIS plan as presented and included in our agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Go to Item 8B, Consider Approval of Campus Name Change for the Cooperative Behavior Center. Is that you, Mr. Moore?
Sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Morrison, Trustees, you should have in your agenda packet the proposed name change for the Cooperative Behavior Center from the Cooperative Behavior Center to the Pathfinder Achievement Center, the same information that was presented last month at the school board meeting. I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? Being done, the Chair will entertain a motion on approval of the name change.
Move approval of the name change as printed in our agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Go to Item 8C, Consider Approval of HBJ Stadium Renovations. Mr. Hudson?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Gluck, Trustees, and Dr. Morrison. First, I'd like to start by making sure that all of you have at your places a stapled document. This is the final edition version. I think there was preliminary draft copies that were included in your presentation board material that you received over the weekend. I'll be referring to this stapled document throughout the evening. On December 10th, the district received a tentative sealed proposal for the HBJ stadium renovations. The proposals were evaluated by the established and printed criteria and ranking. We have provided a letter of recommendation from our architects, Oregon Associates, who assisted with the evaluation and ranking of the proposals. At this time, the administration, we would like to recommend the board's approval of the following. Contractor, Bob Construction. Construction amount, $6,418,000, and the project amount of $7,427,330. It's our intent to start this construction after the end of the football season, mid-November, and have it complete prior to the first football game fall of '14, next season. I can review any of the copies and go through any of that information you would like and be available to answer any questions that you may have about anything.
Anybody have any questions? To Mr. Hudson?
The timeline, to be able to have that done in that amount of time, how reasonable is that, in your opinion? I mean, is that doable?
Yes, sir.
Easily or doable? We're going to be lucky, or doable, we're rolling the dice doable?
It's doable getting started as soon as we can, as soon as football season's over. And it's going to be doable just because it needs to be doable, that we don't have any options. During the spring portion, we will have soccer games out there. They will actually use the visitor's side of the stadium, so it won't impact soccer, but we need to have a rate for football.
Thank you.
Dr. Castaneda?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Sometimes, or usually, we have the source of funding for the bids that we're considering. Could you fill me in on that?
I was asked, Dr. Barajas would answer that question.
Yes, ma'am. We have three separate funds that we're going to use, all of which are non-general fund funds. The first of which is the remaining bond interest that we have from the $2,285 million bond issue, not bond proceeds, but bond interest that we're using up. In addition, we're also using some remaining bond funds from that particular time period. And the last is our CIP, Construction in Progress, or process that we have. We've identified $7.6 million, actually before the bids came in, that we were hoping the bids would come in about that amount, and sure enough, it did. So we have this entire project covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, if there are no further questions, the Chair will entertain a motion on approval of the HBJ stadium renovations.
I'd like to move the approval of the HBJ renovation as stated in our document.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Go to Item 8D, Consider Purchase of Classroom Furniture Catalog. Mr. Booker?
Yes, sir. To Mr. Gluck, to the board members present, and to Dr. Morrison, we have before you a renewal or action for classroom furnishings. This contract normally would come before you for renewal in November or December. In this particular case, we've analyzed the requests from the principals for their maintenance request and furniture replacement. So we had a choice of either coming before you tonight with an increase in the contract or bringing it back for action to renew so that we could just do it in one action. We've decided administratively to bring it back tonight to renew it as an action item for $875,000. It is the standard classroom furniture contract that we've had in the past. We're just bringing it back a couple of months early in lieu of an increase in contract and then the next month of renewal. within the next month of renewal.
Are there any questions? Mr. Booker. There being none, the chair will entertain a motion on the purchase of classroom furniture.
Move to approve the... Purchase of classroom furniture catalog with two-year renewal options as printed in our agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. We'll go to item 8E. Consider approval of increasing the educator legal liability premium. Is that Mr. Booker or Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith is going to certainly join me on this with Mr. Glick. I'll get it started, but basically, the risk management department performed a risk analysis, determined that we need to lower our deductible, which resulted in an increase in premium, which is being brought before you for approval. Mr. Smith, our risk manager is here to discuss and provide an overview of the process.
Good evening, Mr. Glick, and fellow board members, and Dr. Morrison. We recently have had some claims experience, and in doing that, we reviewed the Dallas trial review. We saw the cost to just take a claim from the initial part to summary judgment, and then the cost to go to trial. All those costs have gone up significantly, and basically, just to take a cost to summary judgment, a claim to summary judgment, costs basically around $60,000 or more. To take it on to trial, we're looking at $70,000 or $80,000. So it looked like it was prudent at this time to lower deductible from $150,000 to $50,000, and the cost is around $63,000, I believe. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Axe.
Mr. Smith, I don't know whether you're the appropriate person, or perhaps some of my colleagues who are lawyers might know the answer to this. I've been out of town, and I just got my agenda today, and it just occurred to me, it's, I was always under the impression that school districts have sovereign immunity from lawsuit, and I was wondering what this, what kind of events does this cover?
Okay. Well, that's true. We do have sovereign immunity for state law, but this is federal law for discrimination, for wrongful discharge, and other items such as that. So when you go to the U.S. federal court, then you miss out on the state immunities, and that's what happens. And then also, anybody can sue us for any reason, and once the process is started, we have to go through the process to solve that. Hopefully, it would be summary judgment, but even that is very, very expensive, and we're seeing the courts lean more towards having the person have their day in trial, which pulled it more into expense. So that's the reason we evaluated this and felt that this was a prudent move for our district.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for either Mr. Booker or Mr. Smith?
I have a question.
Mr. Lambert.
The deductible is, is that per occurrence?
That's true. It's per occurrence.
Okay.
Anybody else? There being no further questions, the chair will entertain a motion on the purchase of professional staff development, no, no, of increasing the educator legal liability premium.
I'll make a motion that we approve the increase in educator legal liability premium as printed in our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. We'll go to item 8F. Consider purchase of professional staff development consultant services. Mr. Booker.
Yes, sir. Once again, to Mr. Glick, and to the board president, to Dr. Morrison, we have before you a staff development, professional staff development consulting services contract. You'll note that we have four providers that are new to the district, and when I say new, new being brought before the board for contracts. One, The Wellness International LLC, Blue Daisy Doing Businesses Leader School, Allison Alliance, and Reclaiming Youth International. Several of these firms are scheduled to perform staff development in our district, and we are bringing it before you for action so that we could keep on schedule with the scheduled staff development. The estimated value of the contract is $875,000.
Any questions, Mr. Booker?
Or, excuse me, $750,000.
Ms. Griffin.
Help me. It appears that we are approving professional staff development consultant services on a regular basis.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I have lost track since the beginning of school of how many of these professional staff development consultant services we've approved. I think the last time, or the time before that, we had a list. I think it was a list that was front and back. Help me understand why we're having so many professional staff development consultant services done, and it's not done all at once, when I think schools prepare and have a professional development calendar or whatever? Correct me in my error on my logic of thinking.
Ms. Griffin, I can kind of give you an airplane overview and then allow Dr. Wells and her staff to respond. Staff development, there are two issues that we deal with. First, the needs assessment and identifying emerging solutions and innovative pedagogy for delivery of instruction. The other issue that we come up with is booking with individual consultants who specialize in these areas. We send out an RFP. They may be booked at that time with other districts and other engagements. To comply with 4431 of the Education Code, we have no other choice but to submit another RFP and try to reschedule when they're available. So it is an effort to pair up district needs for new engaging instructional staff development with the availability of the leaders in that field, and try to time it with our bid schedules. And I would just like to say, the staff for the curriculum department has worked very cooperatively with the purchasing department to try to make that happen, but in dealing with staff development and the bid law, trying to balance both, this is what has occurred.
So if we wanted to look at the overall of how much of how many bids we have granted, the purchasing department would be able to give me that detailed number?
Yes, ma'am. I could give you the number of staff development...
Of all of the bids we've had for this school year?
Yes. Yes, I could do that. And let me share with you, these are catalog bids, not that these are necessarily expenditures that we've made. These are just estimated expenditures, but yes, I could give you, these are the, and I believe this is the third one to answer your questions. I believe this is the third one. The estimated values of those contracts, and if needed, I could give you the expenditures that have been made against those contracts here to date, but I do want to bring out that those are just estimated contract values for the year.
Dr. Wells, would you like to add something? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glick. I wanted to add just an example of one of the things Mr. Booker just mentioned. The leader school, we're doing a book study with the principals. We're focusing on instructional leadership, and they did not have any openings for coming into our district to train our principals, but they did after a while. So we went back and worked with Mr. Booker, and they're actually coming in to train our principals. So we were already doing the book study. It's just an added plus that they were able to open up their calendar to come and actually train our administrators, because we are focusing on instruction this year. So that's one of the examples of why we've come back with this vendor, because they're now available. We worked with their headquarters, and they're able to work with us to kind of come in and help our principals with some of the instructional focus that we're doing.
Any other questions for either Mr. Booker or Dr. Wells? There being none, the chair will entertain a motion on the purchase of professional staff development consultant services.
Move to approve professional staff development services presented in our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. We'll go to item 8G. Consider approval of early release waiver for Rowlett High School. Dr. Wells.
Mr. Glick, trustees, Dr. Morrison, before you, you have a request for early release for Rowlett High School due to the fact that Garland ISD is hosting the regional academic decathlon competition this year. We are hosting districts including Rockwall ISD, Highland Park, Richardson ISD, and Plano ISD. So in order for the students to have the opportunity to start competition a little bit early, we're requesting early release for Rowlett High School only. They would release at 11 o'clock so that the competition can begin, and students aren't competing late into the night on that Friday night. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Axe.
Would that be the entire student body?
Yes, that would be the entire student body at Rowlett High School, minus the academic decathlon participants.
Any other questions? There being none, the chair will entertain a motion on approval of the early release waiver for Rowlett High School.
Make a motion that we approve the early release waiver for Rowlett High School as printed in our agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. And then we'll go to item 8H. Consider approval of choice of school basic calendar. Mr. Washington, is that you?
This is Ms. Phil.
Okay. Ms. Phil.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Glick, trustees, and Dr. Morrison. I have just a quick presentation. What you have in front of you is our choice of school calendar for the upcoming choice period, which is for the 2014-2015 school year. Just wanted to go over some of those dates with you and talk to you a little bit about why we're making some of the changes that we are proposing with this calendar. As usual, we are beginning the secondary choice of school period in late January, January 22nd to February 21st would be our secondary choice of school period. Elementary, we're proposing March 18th to April 16th, which is a change. In the past, we have used the entire month of March for our elementary choice of school period. So this is about two weeks late that we would be starting if we go with this proposed calendar. And why, you may ask, are we doing that? And one of the reasons is that we missed one week of language testing because our spring break falls in the month of March. And the second is that our STAR results have not been returned by the time we conclude the choice of school period and begin processing. And so we're just going to take a quick look at the calendar here. As you can see, that second full week in March is our spring break, and if we begin on the 18th of March, we recapture, of course, one extra week where we can do testing of the Wicca Common News Language Survey at our offices for our students who come in speaking a language other than English. We test approximately 1,400 students during this open enrollment period, and that extra week really does make a difference. The second reason is that we have, we don't receive our STAR results back until the 21st of May. That makes a difference when we're starting to process choice and actually seating kids at campuses, because we're looking at retention, and then we're also looking at those students who do speak a language other than English who may be exiting from the bilingual or the ESL program, and we need those results from the STAR in order to make really good, really good assignments. Without that, we're just guessing. In years past, we had our teachers participate in something called predicted to exit, who is going to exit from the bilingual or the ESL program, and they were just trying to make an educated guess. With our tax test, we had about 96% accuracy. With the new STAR, our accuracy level has fallen because we simply do not know that assessment well enough to really predict who's going to pass that and be able to exit from the bilingual or the ESL program. So we would really like to be able to push those dates back for elementary. Now, we have proposed a few different things for getting the word out to parents that those dates are changing for the elementary students. We have our usual measures that we use, the choice of school transportation letter that goes out to all current pre-K through 11th grade students before their choice period begins. We put signs on the buses to advertise when choice of school begins. We have parent information meetings, and we conduct those in Spanish, English, and Vietnamese. And we also have our district website that we employ, GRSTV, and our choice forums, of course, have all of the information on them. We are proposing a few new measures to get the word out. We have our Twitter feed, education GIST, our blackboard. We're going to incorporate reminders into that so that we can get the word out to parents that it's coming up, choice forums will be delivered to your home. And then we have new and improved videos that we'll be putting out on GRS television, and they'll also be available on the website for different organizations within the district to use. And there's one thing that we did not include on there, is we are going to be contacting one of our Vietnamese language newspapers and trying to get the word out that way as well, that we do have some changes with our calendar this year. So do you all have any questions about the calendar?
Any questions? Mr. Lambert.
Yes, sir.
Have you anticipated any implications for the students and the parents because of a delay? Is this going to, a delay in terms of when enrollment is going to be completed and notice to parents?
Yes, sir. We did this, we had this same pushback in, well, not pushback, because it's negative anything, but we pulled the dates back a little bit in the 2000, for the 2010-2011 choice of school period, and in that, we found that there were some issues with Pee-wee football. There were also some issues with daycares, and that's why we want to make sure that we're getting the word out. We anticipate that we should have choice of school wrapped up and notifications out to parents by that final week of the school year, and so we're just doing the best that we can to get that notice out to parents.
Any other questions? There being none, the chair will entertain a motion on approval of the choice of school basic calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the choice of school basic calendar as printed in our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to item number nine, superintendent's report. That's a tax report. Any questions? Being none, we're now pleased to go into closed executive session under the Texas Government Code under two sections, 551.071, consultation with our attorney, and under 551.074, discussion about employment personnel matters. I certify that the only topics discussed were those allowed on the law under sections 551.071 and 551.074. Under item 11A, consider approval of authorization for superintendent to finalize settlement in the civil action number 3:11-CV-00502-N-BK. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move the approval of the authorization for the superintendent to finalize settlement in the civil action as printed in our agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. We'll go to item 11B. Consider approval of personnel matters as recommended by the administration. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve personnel matters as recommended by the administration.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please show your affirmation, raise your hand. That item passes 7-0. Is there a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned.